Rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alrighty, firstly we have on our agenda is approval of minutes public and non-public from November 18th. Do we have a motion on that?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from both public and non-public of November 18th.
I'll second that. Alright, I'll second. Alright, any comments, questions, corrections, concerns, anything on these? Public, anything on that? I don't see anything. I did not, looks great as always to me. I think, and then, non-public looked fine to me too. Anything? Glenn Watts in place? Alright. All those in favor of approval of minutes public and non-public from November 18th signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, abstentions. Alright, public comment? Hello? And we'll pick that up later. Alright, student representative report, we have your written report here, so we can read that. But any, any highlights you got here, Abby, take it away.
Most of the highlights are just the new sport enrollment numbers.
Nice.
So I think some of them have gone up. I'm not entirely sure which one I don't have that data. And probably a couple of new things that have been added is interactive decorating cookies for the senior center next Tuesday. Art club is decorating cookies also.
Cool.
And student council, they're planning spirit days for the week before Christmas and they're working on a door decorating competition.
Awesome. Cool.
Oh, and auditions for the musical are this Wednesday and Friday.
This week, alright, break a leg to everybody doing that. I see origami is on there, working on there, math and D I, all sorts of good stuff. Cool. Everybody's getting ready for break, obviously I see the countdown on the TV up there.
We have three countdowns in the cafeteria.
How's everything else going? Is?
Pretty good, things are slowing down as break is anticipating, but still pretty, pretty fast, so pretty jolly.
Alright, any questions for Abby on that? Any, anything else ongoing along at the schools?
Thank you.
Yeah, cool. Alright, up next we got our budget committee report. So as we were all there last Monday on the 17th. Uh, I'm sorry, this is the minutes from the 17th from the work session. And so you all were there at the most recent one on the 71st where they approved their budget. So that's there for your records, any questions on that? Okay. EIC. Who would you, who would you like to take that, Kathleen?
So long, I've been a bad if. So you've got a copy of the meeting minutes in your packet. And, um. Basically, we went over a review of the curriculum cycle. It's broken out there. We had some concerns about the dress code policy and the details of all that are documented in the report. And the policy reviews are listed below for the board to look at that later. Under our new business. And I think, yeah, we did schedule a meeting for December 18th. That's coming right up.
Okay. Alright, any questions on that? Was there a concern, I just get, we're curious, were there concerns about the dress code policy? Or was it just something that principals had talked about? Or was it something they're having difficulty with or?
There's some difficulty in interpretation of the dress code policies. And of course it varies from school, from high school to the junior high. No, I think no big issues at the elementary level.
Yeah.
But it's not just with the students, it's staff too, so.
Okay.
And, you know, they, there were some questions about, um. You know, whether or not we're gonna pick certain battles to.
Right.
To, you know, just maybe make it more clarified on what the anticipation is here that we need expectations met.
Yep.
Do we have a staff handbook on file?
Yes.
We do? Is that in there, is there a dress code?
Yes, there's a dress code policy for staff also for the school board.
Yeah. It's always good to revisit as times change and people change and things come up, it's always good to look at it, so. Cool. Alright, any other questions on that? Alrighty, uh, coming up next we have our finance facilities. We had a presentation from Johnson Controls. We had our new rep from JCI, he came out and was just kinda there to, you know, make an introduction. He's gonna talk about a cost savings report that he can, you know, give us there. So, there was more of a con, uh, introduction with him. Matt and Dan gave us their report talking about, you know, getting, as these boilers are getting about 10 years old, having to deal with some of these issues. So they're working on those, but the silos are filled and they're filling them up as needed. They did a walkthrough with MTD on all the parking lots where to plow and everything, so that's helped to keep things safe. That really helped a lot. They did do a walkthrough, they're gonna do a bonfire down below on February 15th, so they will be able to do a bonfire for the senior class. Sounds like they've worked it out with the fire department, they're gonna keep plowing so they have access and that sounds like, right, right? Yeah. And that's a donation from the, from the, um, fire department to the senior class that they're gonna be able to take care of that and so that they have access. And so that way they'll have it, uh, time with winter carnival, so that'll be kinda fun. A little hole to build it, but hey, you can get your fire, so. Provides a great theme of fire and ice, if I do say so myself. They're doing some deep cleaning and painting over holiday break, they're not doing stripping and floor wax and redoing during breaks, they, they found no real benefit to that, so that's cool. They also got, they had to replace the traffic cones here, so they found purple cones. So here at the high school, you'll see like purple safety cones instead of the bright orange ones. Those would be cool. You see the snowmobile, snow fence, or the, um, snowmobile guide markers went up over the weekend, so that's good, that's all set. Just as an update, we are submitting the Route 4 intersection down here to the state for a road safety audit, that'll come down later next year. We did have a map of battery cages and other things down below for athletic fields. And that was a nice looking map for that. And is that in our packet here?
It is.
It is, okay, alright, yeah. Okay, oh, there, just down below, alright. I did not scroll all the way down there. Um, okay, so that is good, that was a nice, uh, we found that to be a nice little diagram that helped us really understand where they wanted to put everything and it looked really good. And it kind of best manages the use of the space. And also if we look at, um, which one is it? The last one with number six, it shows where we'll, we have space for another middle school field. Because that has been an issue, that we don't have enough space for another middle school field, so. Talk about that. We also talked, uh, we had a request from someone in the community to look into logging the property behind Canaan Elementary School. Matt did look into that, Matt and Dan looked at and they talked to some loggers. There's really only about three and a half acres, they're not accessible to any roads. The wood is not, there's not much hardwood on there, it's really not worth any kind of logging operation. And plus the benefits to the students of having forests and trails and all that sort of thing. I, I, I think is really valuable and, and yeah, so.
You're using it all the time.
Yeah, yeah, so we, we just, you know, we, we heard the, you know, request from the person in the community to look into it, so we just looked into it, just to see what it was. But it doesn't make financial sense and plus also, you know, the.
Environmentally.
Environmentally, yeah. It's not like we have 100 acres of, you know, beautiful hardwood oak that, you know, will fetch us a lot of money or anything like that. Yeah, so, but we, you know, we, we looked into it just, just to do our due diligence, so that, that was fine, that's, that's fair, you know? Just some updates, um. The audit that we are gonna invite them in to do a presentation to, to the school board in January, because they were finalizing it. This is special audit? No, this is the regular audit, right?
That's correct.
This is the regular audit, yeah. So they will come and do a presentation to us in January for that one. And then budget, we talked about that. Contracted services, um, we will have a, every, every month at finance facilities, they're gonna give us the updated negative fund balance for lunch. Right now we're at $6,037 negative. The high school is half of that at $3,100. Tina talked a lot about what they do, they send letters home, they call parents, Lindsay Parejo works directly with families on income balances, they don't allow al card charges. You know, they have some things, you know, but we, they do what they can, so. That is just where we're at, so.
Can I make a comment about that?
Yeah.
I got those notices and it didn't tell me who to send a check into.
Oh.
Great feedback. She was with doing the online.
Yeah, it's kind of a pain sometimes.
So I think that we could improve upon that.
That's good, yeah.
To the point. Cause I'd like to pay for my.
I would like to, yeah, and, and actually I think I have to, because I just got a note saying like my kid's balance is low. And, and I've got the online one to work, but it always irks me that I have to pay like a transaction fee, cause like that doesn't go to the district and that's like an extra 3%. And I'm like, I gotta write a check, but I'm like, yeah, wait, if I give her a check, does she give it to the office, does she give it to the, you know, cafeteria, does she, whatever, so.
Yeah.
I think she can give it to the office and they'll figure it out, but like.
And who's it written out to?
Yeah, and that's the other thing, do I write it out to Cafe? Do I write it out to Fresh Picks? Do I write it out to the high school? That's, yeah, that's a clear, that's a good point, so.
Yeah, and those things are easy to fix.
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
So thank you, that is, that's good feedback, that, that reminds me too, that I, that also reminds me, I need to write a check. But we talked a little bit more about the food pantry up there and talked about better, you know, coordinating with friends in Mascoma about snacks and things like that, so. Sierra was there from Butler Bus and she's been super busy with trainings. Did they get that driver on the road this week, Amanda?
Uh, not to my knowledge.
Not to your knowledge, that's too bad. Hopefully that person can get on the road, hopefully after break, um, we can get that, that bus eight back on the road. The hope is they have like two to three people in training right now, so we will hopefully have a better update at our next finance facilities. But Chris Bezo is in training and he's gonna be able to get his CDL license as well, so that will help. We talked about some policies which we'll see here, we'll get to that. We also talked a little bit about drivers in, there's a class going on right now, uh, and that's pretty good. But we need to work better about students being dismissed just to go leave school to go driving, like in the middle of school day and not like during study hall, but like, like during their classes, they're like, I wanna go drive. Yeah, can't do that. Matt did update us on some lead testing and they did mitigate some areas in CES that they found lead, they put in the filters, they did it, they shut down some faucets until they get the filters changed on them and they'll be all set. Had a long discussion about drop off up here and talked about some water hog mats here to prevent slips and stuff, so. That was finance facility, so any questions on that?
Under the transportation.
Yes.
Now this is with the new management company, even though they're maintaining the Butler name.
Yeah.
Right, um, I'd like to see the subject of the software program transponder, was it?
Oh yes, we should get an update on that.
Yeah, update on transponder, yeah.
Yeah, getting an update on that and where we stand with the new management on it.
That's right, because parents should be able to log on, find where the bus is and see where their kids are, yeah, especially with the delays that we have here.
Yeah, and, you know, coming into this winter weather, it's even more of a concern.
That's for sure, thank you for the reminder. Alright, anything else on finance facilities? Alright, um, superintendent support, Amanda, take it away.
Hold on.
Oh, sorry.
Where? There. If I don't do it right now Kathleen, I won't remember.
You know me, I'm just boom, 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 boom.
Um, so you do have my written report in your packet, I actually wrote it this afternoon.
Oh.
Do you have it?
I have it here, yeah.
Okay. The thing that I start with was what I did this morning. And that was, uh, was a guest reader at multiple classrooms at EBS. They asked the SAU staff if any of us would like to go in and read the elementary kids and what grade level we preferred. And I said, you know what? Those little kids are not really my favorite, but I'll read to whoever wants me in their classroom. I'm a little worried around the kindergarteners, but if they want me, I'll go in. The kindergarten classes combined and I read to them, they were my favorite, they were just well behaved.
You have, you have, you have, it's flowing all over you, wow.
They gave me lots of hugs and, um, it was great, so. Mrs. Estes was like, I think we'll probably have you back, and I said, I'd be happy to come back.
Oh.
So it was really cute.
Nice.
Well, I don't wanna put anyone else, but I have to do that as a school board member.
Sure.
Well, I would too, definitely.
There you go.
Sure, we would pass out.
Last year Miss Hughes did like a week of parents coming in to read to the kids and they like loved it and they really well behaved and it was really fun.
It's, it is really fun, it's good, so. Then I read to a third grade class and then they were very, very good. They're very good at rhyming, you know, we did some rhyming stuff. And then I read to the two first grade classes and one of the kids promptly told me that there was an onomatopoeia in the, um.
What are we teaching these kids?
There sure is. I said, what is an onomatopoeia? And so we got into a good conversation about it, it was great, so we had, we gave a little lesson to the rest of the first grade, so. That was, um, that was a very fun morning for me.
So amazing when they hear the sounds of a word like onomatopoeia, they love it. And they latch on to that word and they never forget it.
It was great, it was cute, it was, it was, it was a pretty fun morning. I did get to see the stinky cheese man on Sunday afternoon, very, very, very cute. Nice, um, the kids were excited to do it, they took great pride in it, very cute and a nice length and you didn't feel like anybody was struggling for their line. So that was, that was very, very well done. When I wrote this, we still had about 15 holiday food boxes left and that quickly we sent out the request again. And I think we are probably close to being full or have been given out the 60 at this point, but we will certainly work with families if people did not sign up and would still like a food box for vacation. As always, we're looking for substitutes. And, uh, there's a holiday concert for IRS today, Seth?
Yep.
Yep, today, 7 o'clock tonight?
That's what I'm trying to get this meeting over.
Seth?
Yep.
Seth, yep, great. And then next Wednesday we will also have the high school.
Yep. Alright, cool, any questions for Amanda? Alright, thank you so much. Alright, business minister's update, unfortunately Michelle's under the weather, but you have her report here in your packet. The budget isn't here for our approval, the total budget is $32,974,071, which is a .96% increase over last year. The draft default budget is also in the packet, the draft default calculation is $33,209,497, which is $89,438 higher than the proposed budget and amounts to a .27% increase over this year's budget. Also included are the draft warrant articles for the review, um, the teacher's negotiated agreement does not have any amounts yet, as we are still negotiating, we have negotiations tomorrow, so we'll talk about that. And then also monthly financials for November, so. Any questions about financials from business? We can try to answer them here or we can get a message to Michelle.
I just wanted to know, what's the process for, for, um, calculating the default budget? Where does that come from?
So the short version is, there's a pretty scripted, um, there's a pretty scripted procedure that Michelle needs to follow. And the short version of that is it's last year's, or current year's operating budget minus any one-time expenditures.
Okay.
So we're really at a, um, at a, at a bonus, if you will, because we have the capital improvement plan, which absorbs a lot of ours, so we're able to keep both the defaults, you know, pretty steady with. The default, our default budget is up quite a bit because Michelle does have to take into account the 26, 27% healthcare.
Yeah.
So that, that is a big explanation of why that default budget is larger.
Yep. Alright.
So will the proposed budget not cover that?
It will.
It would, okay.
Yeah.
It does.
But if we were to say like, uh, you know, if this year we were like, let's spend $50,000 on some, I don't know, uh, new software for Craig. And then, you know, next year, we couldn't put that in the budget because that, you know, that wouldn't roll over to the next year, because that wasn't, that was a one-time expense, because he needed just one year to get that software, so that would come out the following year. That reminds me, like sometimes school association does have webinars on default budgets, so I'll try to look for when they have them. But those are good ones to sign up for, because it can get very confusing, because they, the legislature also tinkers with it like every year too, so.
And it's totally different from municipalities.
It's totally different from municipalities, absolutely totally different, yeah, it's much more assertive too, so. Alright, um, bus routes update, we don't have any updates aside from not getting another driver this week, apparently. Alright, new business, cornhole club, we have the application here. This is nice, I like this nice new app, club application, this is the first new club application. Wow, look at all these people signed up.
I know.
I love it, from interest, I love this, this is awesome. Amanda, do you have anything else to say about this?
I do not, I, it's always just amazing to me to see kids that take this initiative, like our own Abby here and the origami club and again here with the, uh, cornhole club. And it's important that we honor these requests from kids and allow them to start something and, you know, if it gains traction and it becomes, you know, something that kids continue to do year after year, turns into a co-curriculum.
Yeah, absolutely, and Mrs., uh, Mrs. Lorena is the.
Yes.
Advisor, that's great. Yeah, and like I was saying, like I think this is the next sport, I think other schools, if they can find other schools that are doing cornhole, they can set up tournaments with other schools, like you can get, we can get this started. I, I think they're on the cusp of something big, so.
I think this is exciting, I mean, it's just exciting to actually see this form because it's been a long time, you know, in the process of getting it formed.
Yeah.
Remember the nights we would sit here and say, so what about this proposal, we don't have any information for it?
That's right.
So this is great.
Yes, hats off to them for fixing this club form, first of all, to the, to Tina for getting that voted in. And also to them for taking the initiative to get this all done, so, cool. Alright, well, let's start with, entertain a motion to approve the cornhole club.
I'll make a motion to approve the cornhole club.
Okay.
I'll second.
Alright, any further discussion on that?
Will it become effective right away after approval?
I think so.
Yeah, great.
Awesome, yeah, then get going, right away, alright, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed, abstentions. Alright, have at it kids, great job. Alright, up next on our agenda, we have warrant articles. So, the first one we will go to will be warrant article, we only have two that we're gonna talk about right now, is Article 7 and Article 8. Because we're, the, the next on our agenda is budget and default budget. So Article 7 is fund capital, uh, facilities capital reserve. And so we are asking for $350,000 to be added to facilities capital reserve fund, we established that in 1988. And this will, no amount to be raised from additional taxation, so this comes from the unencumbered fund balance that we have at the end of the year. So anything that we are left, uh, that we did not spend at the end of the fiscal year, at the end of June 2027. Yeah, yeah, the end of June 2027, we take $350,000 of that money and put it into our finance facilities capital reserve. So entertain a motion to, uh, on that, on Article 7.
I'll make a motion to accept Article 7 as written, okay?
I'll second.
Alright, discussion on that.
So lately we've had members of the public question our wording about no amount to be raised from additional taxes. Because his argument is that it's all coming from taxes.
Right.
But I'm assuming that, um.
It's prescribed by law.
Yeah, yeah, we're legal.
Yeah.
And we, we don't have any choice in that.
Yeah.
It does need to be there, correct?
Yeah, Peter, yeah, Peter is like, every time he's like, no, that's our board or whoever comes to our meeting is like, no, that's like the law has to say, that's what, because it's very, it's very prescribed like what it has to say.
Right.
And I, I understand the argument that yes, it technically is raised from taxation, but it's no additional amount.
That's the theme.
Yeah, no amount to be raised from additional taxation, yeah, so.
And it does get confusing, excuse me, when, um, you know, our new board members aren't aware of why it's worded this way.
Right, right.
So, go ahead.
And how do you put up with that number or how the, you know, the finance?
The 350?
Yeah.
Yeah, so as we've been doing the CIP, the capital improvement plan, like we look at everything that we've got on there and, you know, Michelle and the finance facilities committee has looked at. Alright, here's all the things that we need to spend money on over the next 10 years, 12, 10 years. And how much is it gonna cost for all that stuff as we spread it out? How much do we need to put in that fund every year to like maintain a balance every year while we have that in there? And whereas in years past, we put about 250 to 300,000 in there, um, with some of the improvements and as things get more expensive, we're like, you know, maybe 350 is a better amount to kind of, um. And it's not like we're building up like a war chest or anything, like we're, we're putting in 350, we're spending down almost 350, we're putting in 350. So it's kind of like a give and take almost every time. But that's the math, it's all spelled out on the CIP, like if you look at the chart, it's just all spelled out like that, so. That makes sense.
Yeah, it's not just like a shot in the dark.
No, 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 it's all, it's all mathematically calculated based on like looking, like projecting, like, okay, if we need to replace like, you know, these ceiling or, you know, this ceiling and this, you know, repaint this or this roof on this building in 2037 and we, you know, it'll cost this much. Replace this field in 2032, it'll cost that much and, you know, do all the math out that way. Yeah, that's how we figured that one out. So. Any other questions on that? And what date do we have to have these decide, voted on by? Does anyone know?
Uh, I'm not sure of the exact.
Okay, well, if we can take a revote when we have everybody here in the first January meeting maybe, then we'll do that, but if not, then we'll just do five.
I think we also have a public hearing that we.
Oh yeah, we can vote at that too, that's right, you're right. Oh, that's right, because we, yeah, because they can always change it after the public hearing.
And we'll need, um, the budget committee.
That's right, that's right.
Also, and hopefully we'll have an associated agreement.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, that's new this year, right, that the budget committee has to weigh in on their vote for the warrant articles, correct?
Yes. Um, alright. Okay, any further discussion on Article 7, capital reserve facilities? Alright, all those in favor of Article 7 as written, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, abstentions, alright, five is up, sit. Alright, Article 8, fund accreditation activities capital reserve fund, so Sheldon Mascoma Valley Regional School District, we're going to raise an appropriate sum of 5,000, up to $5,000 to be added to the accreditation activities capital reserve fund, previously established in 2002. Same thing, same thing, yada, yada, yada. Do you have a motion on that?
I'll make a motion to accept Article 8 as written.
Okay.
Second.
Alright, discussion on this. So this is for our accreditation for NEASC and I know we just completed that, um, but it does cost us about $25,000 or so, right? Third, yeah, give or take. And so in order to make sure we have that money every year, we could put it in the budget, but on the off chance that that budget is defeated, we don't have that money. So, we love capital improvement plans and, you know, reserve funds, so in our wise mind, in 2002, we established this fund, so that way we tuck away for five years, uh, ahead of time, $5,000 at a time. And then we have $25,000 ready for NEASC when they do come, so. That way we at least have that money when we need it and we don't have to worry about any kind of budget, thank you, thank you, anything like that, so. Any questions on that? Alright, all those in favor of Article 8 as written, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, abstentions. Alright, up next, we have the budget, so. We have the budget in your packet, so I guess I will make a motion to accept the budget as $32,974,071.
I'll second.
Okay. And do we have any further discussion on that? Alright, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, abstentions. Alright, and then I will make a motion to approve the default budget in the amount of $33,294,97. Do I have a second?
A second.
Alright, any discussion on that? We do have to technically approve it because we have to sign off on it so that it can stay, say yes, this is the default budget, that sort of thing. Any questions regarding that? Alright, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, abstentions. Alright, got all that stuff. Alright, policy time, fun, fun. Up first, let's see. Well, I'll just make a motion and do all these first readings and then we'll just get the other way, I'll make a motion for first reading policy IC, school year to school year counter. Policy I H C D L slash L E B, advanced coursework, advanced placement courses, and STEM dual and concurrent enrollment program. Policy J F, enrollment and enrollment capacities. Policy G B, E B B, employment, employee-student relations. Policy J C A, change of school assignment, best interests and manifest hardship. Policy J I C K, people's safety and violence prevention. Policy E B B C A, use and location of automated external defibrillators. Policy E H L B, subpoenas involving district students, officials, employees, and/or records. Policy F A A, annual facility plan and unused district property. Policy J L C J A, emergency plan for sports-related injuries and additional. Policy J L C J A, emergency plan for sports-related injuries and additional protocols for athletics participations. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Alright, first one up, I C, school year, school year calendar. Who got this one? Amanda, do you have any comments on this?
Yeah, E I C reviewed this one.
Yes.
Basically, you're looking at just some legislative updates.
Yep.
In this, um, it's nothing too, too major. Uh, we did keep the language around our days and um, in accordance with both our negotiated and professional agreements with the M B R E A and M B R S S A.
Alright, any questions on that? Alright, next one, I H C B slash L E B, advanced coursework, AP courses, and STEM dual and concurrent, dual and concurrent enrollment program. Again, this probably went to E I C.
Sure did.
Wonderful. Any, is this uh other state updates, legislative updates?
That's, that was the conclusion on that one.
Alright.
Was to go with this Na- New Hampshire School Board Association policy.
Okay. Any questions or concerns on that? Alright, policy J F, enrollment and enrollment capacities. Do you have to talk about that too?
We decided to align with the New Hampshire School Board.
Okay. Any questions on any of that stuff? So basically, this is setting uh capacity limitations for our schools, programs, classes, and activities. This is all new uh in there, so specific limits, ratios, specialized needs, things like that, so. Alright, uh, next one, G B E B B, employee-student relations. Does this also go to E I C?
I don't think it in my notes.
I don't think so.
Yeah. Where are we putting it?
That one did not. Go to E I C.
No.
Where are we gonna send it?
Well, we sent it to the policy work.
Uh, policy work, that's where I saw this one before.
Yep.
So.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and so then, yeah, I didn't have any comments on this.
Yeah, oh yeah.
But this is, this is probably a pretty important one to have.
As we live.
Not saying.
So this, actually, this policy went from recommended to required by law.
Yeah.
Okay, so that was the biggest thing there. Um, and then you really are just looking at some new legislation.
Yeah.
Uh, H V two thirty-one, um, and that requires a policy, so that's the biggest um issue there. It requires a policy that prohibits staff from transporting students to medical appointments and the like without parental permission, absent an emergency.
Yep.
So that was a big change in the.
Law.
The law, and so it needs.
But then actually not transport students.
I remember when something came out a long time ago and there were a number of us parents who had children in the school and we would give, you know, let's say my daughter went to Lori Sandborn's house and, um, you know, or Kira would come to my house and, you know, there was always, people weren't sure whether that was.
But it's your own kids.
When it was your own kids, you know, because even to the point where it says, um, staff shall not fraternize. I mean, that word is pretty generic and, you know, so Kira comes over to my house and I'm like, hey, Kira, so how are things going? What's new, you know? So.
I, I feel your pain.
Yeah.
Do it. Kids are at my house with my kids.
Yeah.
That's there, yeah.
It is what it is. I mean, it's a small community. There's, there's, there's only so much you can do, but you just have to, we just ask that people make the right decisions and.
Right.
Use your brain, right?
Right, I just, I know it comes up. It seems like all the time, you know, can we, can we, you know, should we, shouldn't we?
That's why we have this policy to kind of put some guardrails around it and establish some things and obviously, like if you have questions, come see Amanda, I guess. Alright, any other questions on this one? Okay, uh, change of school assignment, J C A. Yeah, we looked at this one again, also, um, also required by law. Section A is all brand new. We do not have that. Uh, Amanda, do you have any comments on this?
This is just, this is so heavily leaned with legal changes. I, it's, we just say thank you very much to the attorneys of the school board association.
That's right. We do not try to. Words meant this one.
And it is a policy that we have used in the past.
Yeah.
Um, to help kids out and I, it is a valuable policy to have. Um, you know, other than the legal changes to it, it's a policy that works very well in order to have a very prescribed way of addressing the student's, you know, inability to attend one of our schools.
Yeah. Alright.
I got, oh gosh.
Yeah.
My only concern about this is like, what if the family is not being saved to the kids? Then who can they turn to? Like who? If they can't turn to their teachers to go to the hospital.
Oh, you hold back on the other one?
Yeah, sorry.
Oh, yeah.
Nine-one-one.
Yeah.
Yeah, like, so like, what if?
Yeah, it's tough.
So, so I'll, I'll be honest.
What if they tell like the school nurse or something like that?
Well, this is, um, this is, in my opinion, in response to, um, maybe a social worker was taking a kid to an appointment for, we'll say, birth control.
Mm-hmm.
And the parents didn't believe in birth control. So that's why you're seeing that change.
Mm-hmm.
Um, ninety-nine, I would say a hundred percent of the time here, if we need to transport a kid to a medical appointment, we call the parent. The parent says, thank you very much for helping us out.
Yep.
I've never known us to take a kid to an appointment that the parent has not known about, but it has happened in other districts, so that's what that's in response to.
Yeah, I just think about like N S A S or something, like who is protecting those children then?
As soon as, as soon as we get any um whiff of anything that could uh potentially be a harm to a kid, sexualized or not, we are involving D C Y F. Um, and after that, and in this, at the same time, we're involving the police department.
Because you're a mandated reporter. You're all mandated.
Yeah.
We're all mandated reporters, yeah. Well, that's good, at least, so. Good question, good question. Alright, um, J I C K, people safety and violence prevention. And this is again required by laws, about bullying prevention. Uh, we looked at this. These are just more legal, more uh legislative updates. Amanda, anything specific on your answers?
Um.
I don't know if you had anything specific you wanted to talk about.
No, it's, um, does help with if there's an inter-district bullying investigation, like, uh, we have kids that got bullied or bullied Lebanon kids, you know, how we would coordinate with the other school district to do that.
Oh, that's good.
Um. They updated some definitions for clarity. Uh, and then I do believe there is, um, you know, a little bit more of a repercussion for false reporting in this.
Alright, any questions on that? Alright, it has bullying prevention and education in there too, so. I can't remember if we already had that or if that's new to the law. I can't remember, but.
We've had on the books.
We've had, yeah, yeah, oh yeah, we've had this policy on the books, but I can't remember if like actually putting in like uh anti-bullying education into the curriculum. Is part of the law or not, I just can't remember that. Alright, next one, uh, E B B C A, use and location of automated external defibrillators. Uh, we had this one in finance facilities. Um, this is actually going to, we'll rescind the policies next time. Uh, this is going to rescind three different policies that were kind of all over the place and not being uh updated regularly uh across the board, but um, this kind of combines all of them into this. Uh, the biggest thing about this is that it tells us where we should put them, um, because they need to be in a place, um, that is, uh, where is it?
It needs to be quickly accessible.
Quickly accessible and it has to be in a place, uh, guidelines set by the American Heart Association or another nationally recognized guidelines focused on emergency cardiovascular care. So before it did, it just said like have it, but now like we actually have to place it in a place that's actually quick to access and like that people know about and things like that, so. That's the big change on that one. Uh, any questions on that?
The other big change is that they're cracking down on the registration of that A E D.
Oh, yeah.
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 So, um, again, I think it calls on the school nurse, calling our policy.
Yep, that's, yep, A E Ds we maintain by the school nurse. Yep, maintenance done, yep.
And that's throughout the state of New Hampshire, wherever there's an A E D, like if it's in your town office building, it still has to be registered.
Oh, yeah, or your workplace, like, like hypothermia or whatever.
Yeah, that's right.
Alright, there's that one. And then, let's see, uh, E H L B, subpoenas involving district students, officials, employees, and or records. Uh, this is also a good one to have. We do on occasion, um, have records subpoenaed or have people that have been subpoenaed, so this is one that should be uh having. We do not currently have this one. Um, but looking at this in finance and facilities, we thought that was a good idea, so.
Yep.
Any questions on that? Alright, and then F A A, annual facility plan and unused district property. Uh, we have this already, but this just kind of, uh, this updates with new legal, new legislative updates. I cannot remember what it is. Has to do with, uh, some of it has to do with charter schools and notifying charter schools that we have unused property. Um, you know, this is in bigger districts that are like getting rid of an entire school building. They have to like notify a charter school in town and offer them first, right, first refusal, something like that, so. That's basically that. Any questions on that one? Alright, and then J L C J A, emergency plan for sports-related injuries and additional protocols for athletics participation. We do have this one already. This has some legal updates. Um, we looked at this in financing facilities as well. This has again with uh American Heart Association updates. Yeah. I don't think there's anything else major. It updated it with the A, the external defibrillators, so. Any questions on that one? Alright, any questions on any of those policies that were due for first reading? All right, uh, all those in favor of adopting for first reading, policy I C, I H C B slash L E B, policy J F, policy G B E B B, policy J C A, policy J I C K, policy E B B C A, policy E H L B, policy F A A, and policy L C J A, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions. Alright. Agenda items for next meeting, which will be January? Thirteenth, woo! And then we are going to have a public hearing the very next night, January fourteenth, so save that Wednesday, January fourteenth, because we have public hearing that night. And.
What time is that?
Uh, that will also be at six P M. Um, and then make sure that you have January thirty-first, Saturday, January thirty-first, eight-thirty A M, here in the library. We'll meet because that is the live session at nine A M, uh, here at the high school, so that's Saturday morning. Hopefully it's not too cold that day and hopefully.
You know how we see it.
Let's hope we don't do that. Alright, public comment? Thank you. Alright, first of all, we have two resignations here. Anyone would like to make a motion on that for green sheet?
I'll make a motion to accept the resignations as presented for December ninth. It's a date on that.
I'll second that.
Okay. Alright, all those in favor of accepting the resignations as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Abstentions. Alright, and it looks like we do have non-public for A and B, correct?
Yes, hiring and uh employee.
Hiring and employee stuff, okay. What's, uh, I'll make a motion to go to non-public.
Second.
Alright, there's a second. Joe?
Yes.
Tim, yes. Kathleen?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Lara?
Yes.
Alright, we are on non-public. Thank you, everybody. We'll see you in January. Great holiday season.